The Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. Senators and all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by Pendent Rajagopal Thupple, Hindu Senator of Virginia, the Richmond Temple in Glen Allen, Virginia. Following the prayer, all will remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America by Senate Page Yaseen Badi.
Om Shri Gurubhyo Namaha Hari Om. Badhram Kirtne Vishru Noyamadheva. Badhram Pashe Maakshavirya Jatra. Stiray Rangai E Shostva Agum Sastanobi. Veshava Deva Hitayyada Yu. Swastina Indro Vrudashrava. Swastina Puja Vishvveda. Swastina Starcho Arishthanemi. Swastino Bruhaspatirdhadatu. Om Shanti 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 Hari Om. Oh God, may we hear auspicious words with the ears. May we see auspicious things with our eyes. May we enjoy a peaceful life with steadiness in your body and mind. May the supreme rich elements like fire and earth be propitious to us. May the protector bless us with well-being and prosperity. May the holy ensure our welfare. Peace, peace, and peace. Hari Om. God bless you all. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll. All those present will please record their vote. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal for Wednesday, January 22, 2020.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Lucas moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. All in favor of waiving the reading of the Journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-five, noes five.
Ayes thirty-five, noes five. The reading of the Journal is waived. Clerk report any communication from the House delegates. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the communications from the House of Delegates.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-five, noes five.
Ayes thirty-five, noes five. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. Clerk report any communication from the governor.
We do not have any, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now comes the time in the morning hour where we have the privilege and the pleasure of welcoming our distinguished guests with us here in the Senate Gallery. I will give my daily reminder that the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate, and at the very end, we will all applaud together. I'd like to begin by recognizing the senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, we were able to start our session with a beautiful blessing from Pendent Rajagopal Thupple, who's from the Hindu Center of Virginia, the Richmond Temple in Glen Allen, and we're so grateful that he could come and join us today. He's here with friends and family, and I hope you will give them all the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Pendent Rajagopal Thupple and guests please rise in the gallery if you are able? Pendent, thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. We are grateful to have you back here in the Senate. We know you've given the prayer here before and really got us off to a wonderful start, and we echo the eloquent words of the senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan. Very appreciative for your moral leadership here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and thank you as well to each one of you for all of your wonderful service and for bringing us together and elevating the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Senator. How are you?
Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
You have the floor.
Mr. President, today on the grounds and up in the gallery, we have representatives from the Virginia Assisted Living Association. This is a membership group that advocates and communicates and provides resources and awareness for both nonprofit and for-profit large and small senior assisted living facilities or and assisted living facilities across the board. Mr. President, we all know that we are in short supply of these communities. We're going to need more as we go forward, so I hope that we'll all be aware of the resources necessary in our individual communities and will support these folks. With us today, we have Lee Moorhead, Joel Labercombe, Chad Williams, Susan Ayala, and Amber Foster, the latter three from Commonwealth Senior Living. So, Mr. President, I hope you and the chamber will give them our warm welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the Virginia Assisted Living Association please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today, and thank you for the work you do every single day all around the Commonwealth of Virginia to give assistance to our wonderful citizens who need that type of care, and we echo the eloquent words of the senator from Williamsburg. It is so important what you do to care for vulnerable populations, and it is truly the Lord's work, and we're very grateful to each one of you. So I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from the Virginia Assisted Living Association. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Senator, you have the floor.
It is my pleasure to introduce a group of eighth graders from the George Washington Middle School in Alexandria called Standing for Tomorrow, and I was so impressed with this group of young lobbyists. Last year, when I went to their classroom, they presented me with a PowerPoint, scientific evidence, model legislation, and things I couldn't say no to. What began as a science project to determine impacts of mold in classrooms and on the health of staff, students, and teachers has ended up as an important piece of legislation, and they're counting on the support of the Education Committee. I promised them they would have it, so please don't make a liar of me. And, Mr. President, if you could, please extend the warm welcome of the Senate to Standing for Tomorrow.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from Standing for Tomorrow please stand in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today, and thank you for your tremendous leadership. It's really bright, thoughtful, young people like you that make the Commonwealth of Virginia so special and give us all hope for our future, and we echo the eloquent words of the senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben. You all are welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from Standing for Tomorrow. The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Today, we're joined by Jamie Van Cleve and Bree Gesick and their moms. They represent students throughout the Commonwealth with seizure disorders. Epilepsy is the most common serious brain disorder that knows no age, racial, social class, or geographical boundaries. Jamie and Bree will be speaking in subcommittee today regarding Senate Bill 420, the Jamie and Bree Strong Act, that would ensure our school personnel are provided proper seizure recognition and seizure first aid training. Mr. President, let's offer Jamie, Bree, and their moms the warmest welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Jamie, Bree, and your moms please rise in the gallery if you are able? Jamie and Bree, thank you all so much for being here today in the Senate and in your Capitol. We appreciate your advocacy and your focus on helping so many other people who deal with this very, you know, serious condition, and thank you for turning your experience and your pain into purpose to help other people. It truly represents the best of who we are, and thank your moms for investing in each one of you and making you the leaders that you are here today. So enjoy your day at the Capitol. Thanks for enlightening our process, and we echo the eloquent words of the senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Jamie, Bree, and their moms. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to check if my seatmate has any balloons.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, today in the gallery, we have with us Dr. Robert Andrews from the VCU School of Business, and, Mr. President, Dr. Andrews has four grandchildren with him showing up, showing the process of the legislature, and he made the wise choice to come to the Senate instead of the body down the hall. Mr. President, if you could offer the warm welcome of the Senate to Dr. Robert Andrews and Riley, Luke, Sam, and Joelle Andrews. I think they're right behind me.
I thank the senator. Would Dr. Robert Andrews and your family please rise to the gallery if you are able? Dr. Andrews, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you for your tremendous scholarship and leadership and all that you do at VCU and around the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are very grateful for what you contribute here to our state. Thank you to your wonderful family for their support. They look like very bright young people, and I'm sure they have tremendous futures, and so we appreciate you. You're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Dr. Robert Andrews and his family. Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We want to recognize some hard-working young people from Wise Street. They're the Virginia Youth Foundation for Healthy Youth Award-winning youth-led volunteer program, and they're here today to promote Virginia Healthy Youth Day. As a member of the Board of Trustees for the Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth, I'm proud to welcome these high school students who volunteer their time across Virginia working on projects to improve the health of all Virginians. The Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth empowers Virginia's youth to make healthy choices by reducing and preventing youth tobacco use, substance abuse, and childhood obesity. Established by the General Assembly, the Healthy Youth Day is an annual event hosted by the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth, and it promotes healthy lifestyles for our young people, including not using tobacco products and e-cigarettes. And I want to add, we are now seeing the lowest numbers yet for youth tobacco use in the Commonwealth. The number of high school smokers in Virginia is down more than 75% from where it was 20 years ago, and that's due in large part to the efforts of these fine young people like these Wise Street volunteers, and I think the "Y" stands for why in the world would you smoke? Mr. President, if you could give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
Thank the senator. Would our leaders from Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and also thank you for your tremendous leadership in promoting health among our young people and really among everyone here in the Commonwealth. It is so important to have that message be carried forward, particularly by powerful young people like yourself, so we are appreciative. We echo the appreciation and eloquent generous words of the senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden. This is not your first time here. I know you all are well represented here every single year, and so thank you for carrying that mission forward for so many people to benefit from. So I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. Senator from Washington, Senator Pillion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may need to remind everybody to hold their applause at the end because my seatmate has agreed to give me a little bit of time on the mic today so I can make this introduction.
The senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase.
Senator has the floor. Mr. President, it is my honor to introduce Jill Carson. Ms. Carson and her husband Ron co-founded the Appalachian African-American Cultural Center in Pennington Gap in 1987 down in Lee County, which originally served as the only school for African-Americans in the town. Ron's great-grandmother built the building. Ron's mother was part of the school's first class, and Ron was part of the last class before integration. Today, Jill Carson serves as Pennington Gap's vice mayor. She and her husband have devoted their lives to maintaining the cultural center and researching causes and cures for black lung disease, which affects so many coal miners in my region. Mr. President, I ask that we offer her the warmest of Senate welcomes.
I thank the senator. Would Vice Mayor Jill Carson please rise in the gallery if you are able? Madam Vice Mayor, thank you so much for being here with us today. We are so grateful for your leadership, and Senator Pillion and I were with you last night at the Southwest Virginia reception, and we're so grateful for all that you do to promote Pennington Gap, but also all of Southwest Virginia and the Commonwealth, and thank you also for what you do at the cultural center. We have both been there, and it's an extraordinary place with a wonderful history, and I want to encourage everyone to visit there. So thank you for what you do for our coal miners and for so many others. Please give Ron our warmest and our best, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Vice Mayor Jill Carson. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for purposes of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Excuse me. Joining us today in the gallery are Virginia Volunteers as part of the Humane Society of the United States. The Humane Society is a very active advocacy group that cares deeply about the welfare of animals. These volunteers and the entire organization provide direct rescue services and care for animals in crises, and I also want you to note that this group works very hard to ensure that good policies are passed. In fact, members of the group are already joined our Subcommittee on Companion Animals this morning. Please join me in welcoming Molly Arnanis and Carol Spisik from the Volunteers of Virginia for the Humane Society of the United States. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Humane Society of the United States, Virginia Volunteers, please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being with us here today. It is wonderful to have you in the Senate and in your Capitol, and we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, and the work you do every day to make sure that the animal population here in the Commonwealth of Virginia is cared for. They're really part of all of our families, and we are grateful for what you do to lift them up, and so we appreciate you. I see my friend Ed Dice up there as well, and it's always wonderful to see you. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Humane Society of the United States, Virginia Volunteers. The senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction and an announcement.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, today I would like to welcome over 20 students from my alma mater, Old Dominion University. ODU is a diverse and dynamic population comprised of 25,000 students, and ODU is a leading research institution ranked second in the number of STEM H degrees that are deployed in the Commonwealth. Please join me and give the warm welcome to the Senate, Mr. President, to our visiting students from Old Dominion University.
I thank the senator. Would our student leaders from Old Dominion University please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are deeply proud of Old Dominion. It is an incredible institution of higher education, and you have great alums like the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove. We're very proud of all that you continue to accomplish. Please give President Roderick our best. I was honored to give the commencement there back in, I think, 2018, and spoke to some stellar scholars, and so we appreciate all that you all do, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from
Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
My announcement. Yesterday, we really, we dropped the ball hard yesterday. Yesterday was the anniversary of someone's birth. That would be our Madam President. Now, I will tell you this, Mr. President. Before I went to Old Dominion University, I was actually a music major, a voice major, at Shenandoah Conservatory of Music in Winchester, and this is something I've always wanted to do, but I've never had an opportunity to because we, so. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Madam President.
Thank you for not acting the whole thing out, Senator. We appreciate that. Appreciate that tremendously, and happy birthday, Madam President. Call the senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, in the gallery today, we have a group of citizens from Bedford County with us today, and in particular, they are with the Bedford Area Chamber of Commerce. Mr. President, I hope that you would give the group the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Bedford Area Chamber of Commerce please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are appreciative that you would take the time to be in your Capitol to add to our legislative process. I know that the senator from Bedford, Senator Newman, who's a wonderful person and is doing a great job, is very appreciative of seeing you all here today, so I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders and friends from the Bedford Area Chamber of Commerce. The senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm still trying to collect myself after that serenade.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, Mr. President, I think our very special guest has arrived, so I rise for the purpose of an introduction of several very distinguished individuals.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, in the gallery today, we have Andrea Carson Johnson. She is the 2020 Virginia Teacher of the Year. We have Rodney Robinson, who was the 2019 National Teacher of the Year, joined with the Regional Teachers of the Year, Gregory Lindocker, Rachel Thompson, Latasha Lee, Jennifer Rogers, Amy Mallow, Sarah Lee Deal, and Michelle Howell. Mr. President, I would appreciate it if you would extend the very warm welcome of the Senate to our very special guest.
Thank the senator. Would Andrea Carson Johnson, Rodney Robinson, and our Regional Teachers of the Year please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and we certainly love all of our distinguished guests here today, but we also want to save you guys for last so that we can all celebrate you here together. What an extraordinary group of educators and what you do in our Commonwealth of Virginia is so impressive, and you're changing the lives for the better of families all throughout Virginia, and so we are grateful to you. Andrea, congratulations on that tremendous honor in 2020. Rodney, great to see you back here, and our National Teacher of the Year as well, in addition to our Virginia Teacher of the Year and our wonderful Regional Teachers of the Year. The Commonwealth is well-served, and we are proud of every single one of you, so I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our extraordinary leaders and teachers of the year. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? What purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of this body, I want to introduce the Southside Virginia Association of Realtors. I believe they may be in an anteroom right now, but it's a large contingent of Southside Virginia Realtors that are making their rounds today. They represent a professional organization that is dedicated to advocating on behalf of private property owners as well as promoting excellence in real estate practices. This association is here on Capitol Square, as they are every year, to greet legislators and let them know what they're doing. Mr. President, I would ask that you would extend a warm welcome, a warm Virginia State Senate welcome, to the Southside Virginia Association of Realtors, who I'm sure are watching this right now.
I thank the senator. If there are any members of the Southside Virginia Realtor Association in the gallery, please rise if you are able, and seeing none, we hope you all are seeing this on TV. We're grateful for your tremendous work and echo the eloquent generous words of the junior senator from Richmond, Senator Morrissey, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Southside Virginia Is there any other business to come in the morning hour? Seeing none, the clerk will call the calendar.
Senate calendar for Thursday, January 23, 2020. Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on third reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move the Senate bills on third reading on the uncontested calendar. Pages 1 through 3, Senate Bill 774 through 977 be placed on their final passage in a block, and any senator resigning, remove a bill from the block. Please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested calendar, third reading, pages 1 through 3, Senate Bill 774 through Senate Bill 977 be placed upon their final passage in the block? With the understanding that any senator resigning a bill be removed from the block, will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 774. Senate Bill 415. Senate Bill 499. Senate Bill 726. Senate Bill 929. Senate Bill 941. Senate Bill 977.
Question is, shall the bills in the block pass? All in favor of the passage of the bills will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, noes zero.
Ayes forty, noes zero. The bills in the block pass.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on third reading. Senate Bill 391, a bill relating to adult abuse, financial exploitation required report by financial institutions.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPite.
Mr. President, can that bill go by for the day?
Without objection. Senate Bill 391 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 314, a bill relating to an act to grandfather certain non-conforming use.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that Senate Bill 314 pass and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, this bill just modifies an existing code section with regard to allowing property owners who build walls on their property and their residence to keep those walls, even if they're determined to be non-conforming. One requirement in there was that it had to require no permit, but what we did was just take out the permit point, so it still has compliance with the zoning ordinance. It's a bit more of a property rights case. It's one of these things that, quite frankly, I think we need to have as we clean up this code section, so based on that, Mr. President, I now move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 314? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 314 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three. Rule 36-1.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three. Rule 36-1. Senate Bill 314 passes.
Senate Bill 329, a bill relating to fees for disposal of solid waste, Russell County.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
I move that the bill do pass.
Senator has the floor.
And I noticed in committee, Mr. President, that the only one that voted against this was the senator from Franklin, so apparently he wants me to talk trash today, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do just that. So this, this bill simply allows my home county, Russell County, to levy fees, to create an ordinance to charge fees for solid waste. It also allows the county to charge fees for the closing ultimately of the landfill that we've had there for a great number of years, and it allows us to join the ranks of those counties that have been granted the same authorities, such as Acemac Island, Pennsylvania, Southampton, and Wise Counties. I hope it be the pleasure of the body that the trash bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 329? Seeing none, the question is, shall the bills in the block pass? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 329 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 37, noes three.
Ayes 37, noes three. Senate Bill 329 passes.
Senate Bill 349, a bill relating to insurance for certain retired employees of political subdivisions.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Senate Bill 349, as currently drafted, expressly authorizes a locality to first have an option to provide life insurance, health and accident insurance to employees of municipal boards, commissions, agencies, and authority. There is no provision in the statute, however, that provides express authority for a locality to extend these benefits to these same employees after they retire, and that's what the bill does. Again, I move passage to the bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 349? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 349 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, noes zero.
Ayes 40, noes zero. Senate Bill 349 passes.
Senate Bill 360, a bill relating to installation of certain facilities by developer reimbursement.
Senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, and speaking to that bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill would allow developers to have pro-rata share of excess water and sewer capacity given to them by a subsequent subdivider of property. I hope it be the pleasure of the House to pass the bill. I'm so, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, the Senate passed this bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 360? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 360 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, noes zero.
Ayes 39, noes zero. Senate Bill 360 passes.
Senate Bill 631, a bill relating to abandoned and stolen shopping carts, local regulation.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass, and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you remember this bill from last year, and those of you in local government have seen it a couple times now. This bill has to do with recovery of loose shopping carts in Planning District 8. So unless you're in Fairfax County, the city of Fairfax, Arlington, Alexandria, Falls Church, Loudoun or Prince William, you really shouldn't care about this bill. I'd love your support. The, the bill has to do with the situation where a shopping cart is removed from, or is found on property other than the retailer's property. And this has been a huge problem in my district. There's a creek in my district called Little Hunting Creek. It's a creek that actually runs by George Washington's house. And I have a group, a friends group that likes to clean it up. And they got me involved in their cleanups about seven years ago, and I decided to go start cleaning up a part of the creek that nobody had ever been in. And I went into this creek, and the first time I went there, we pulled 180 shopping carts out of the creek. Not the woods, the creek, in the creek. And if anybody wants to know how to get a shopping cart out of the bed of a creek, you let me know, I'm an expert at it now. But it usually requires mechanical equipment. We had to get a chain winch. You pull it out an inch at a time, and it takes three men, about an hour per cart. You do the math. An hour per cart, 180, 180 carts. Think about how many volunteer hours that took. Since then, I've now removed about 240 shopping carts out of that creek over the last seven years. Every year I go back, there's 10 or 15 more. And after I started getting attention on this and getting media on it, other people started telling me it's a problem in their neighborhoods. Specifically, in Springfield, there's a huge problem with people pushing the carts out into the neighborhoods. They basically take their stuff home and just leave them out on the sidewalk. If you start looking around, you'll start noticing these things. In fact, somebody's even published a book called The North American Guide to Loose Shopping Carts. Go Google it right now. It has an identification guide, so you can yourself identify different species of carts that you might find out there in the woods or in a creek. Some of them burrow into the ground, some like to stay up, up high, some like to create dams. Anyways, but this bill has gotten actually a lot of media attention. Last night, Fox 5 News covered it, pointed out the problem in Arlington. WTOP covered it today, I found out the problem in Alexandria. But it's a problem. So what the bill does, all the bill does is says that if somebody calls their county board, the code inspector comes out and sees the cart located off the property, they put the, the owner of the cart, they send him a letter and say, "Your cart's been found out in this other place." They then have a period of time to come get the cart and bring it back to their store. If after that period of time, the owner of the cart just says, "You know what? We're just gonna keep ignoring this problem like they have been for the last decade," then the county can remove the cart and then charge the owner for the cost of actually picking it up and taking care of the problem. It just basically resets the incentives. These companies will actually do something. And just, I'm telling you, I've been trying to work with these companies for 10 years now. Walmart installed a cart control system in their parking lot where they put a wire in the ground that trips a brake, and that worked for about a year, and then they stopped buying carts with brakes on them, so now it doesn't work anymore. Costco built a new Costco in my district. I wrote them a letter right next to the Walmart, and I said, "Your carts are gonna get stolen." Costco said, "Our, our people never steal shopping carts, or they never take shopping carts off the premises. We don't know what you're talking about." I've now taken 15 Costco carts out of the creek. And in fact, the problem in Arlington is also a Costco. Costco carts cost over $1,000 each because they're so big, and they're metal. And there's, these companies do not want to deal with the problem. It's a cost to doing business to them to have this litter strewn all over the neighborhoods. Again, in Northern Virginia, this doesn't apply to you outside Northern Virginia. So one other thing, you might hear somebody say, "I don't know if we're really gonna have a big debate about this. We spent 45 minutes on balloons, but maybe we'll spend another 45 minutes on shopping carts." But some people might say this is theft. In order for something to constitute petty larceny, you have to have the intent to permanently deprive somebody of something. It means you want to keep it. And just pushing something off somebody's property and borrowing it is not petty larceny. We do have a statute on the books for removing shopping carts temporarily from property if it's been properly noticed. So we do have authority in the Virginia Code for a separate infraction for doing that. But for some reason, these companies don't want to charge anybody. They want to make it our problem. They want to make it volunteers' problems. So anyways, to try and make people a little happier, because I anticipated this, if you look at subsection D of my bill, it also allows a locality to enact a local ordinance criminalizing or making a civil infraction for the same thing, so they can get some of that fine revenue. But in any event, what this bill does is just resets the incentives to incentivize these companies to start installing these systems to take care of their carts, whether it's to have a coin deposit system where you get your money back, or a thing where you can't take a big bar off the cart, so it hits the door when you're going out, so it won't go outside, or one of these control systems. That's all it does. And I think it's a common sense way to try and deal with this problem and give our localities the authority to reset the incentives, so retailers will actually deal with the situation. And I would hope the body would pass the bill.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose does the senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef, rise?
Mr. President, I have a question of the patron.
Senator, yield for a question.
I will yield.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Senator from Fairfax, are there any other places in the code where we charge the victim of a crime for that crime, a fine or a fee?
Senator has the floor.
Well, I'd say to the gentleman that we had the same conversation in the local government committee, and I explained to him that it's not a theft to temporarily remove a property, a cart from a property. And so I'd also point out that his jurisdiction, Virginia Beach, has this system in place. They enacted a local ordinance to be able to do this in Virginia Beach because of a provision in their charter. And this system was brought to my attention by Margaret Ballard, the last time I brought it up, who lives in Virginia Beach, used to work with the retailers, and she suggested this is a way to fix it by cooperatively working with retailers to clean up their carts. And so I'm really looking to export the lessons learned in Virginia Beach to the whole state, which is why I thought he would support it.
Further question?
Mr. President, will the gentleman yield for one more question?
Senator Yield.
I'll yield for one more question.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Mr. President, for the gentleman from Fairfax, I understand petty larceny is when you steal something and then you do not intend to return it. Can he please tell me how many carts that people have stolen and thrown in a creek that they plan on returning?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would say to the gentleman, that's not what petty larceny is. Petty larceny is taking one's property with the intent to permanently deprive somebody, and simply taking it and putting it somewhere else doesn't necessarily, you mean to permanently deprive them of it and keep it yourself. It means you're borrowing it. And that's why it often, you can't, you can't maintain a conviction for that.
Mr. President.
Further question?
Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I don't think, Mr. President, that anyone who steals a shopping cart and puts it in the creek is only temporarily taking that away from the individual. I think they are permanently intending on keeping that away from the individual they stole it from. Mr. President, this is like me stealing the gentleman's briefcase, dumping its contents all over Capitol ground, and then him getting fined for the contents all over Capitol grounds. I don't think this is right, and I understand that this is specifically for Planning District 8. It is for his area. However, we have what's called the Christmas tree effect here. When a law goes into effect for a specific area, then we pile on, and somebody else says, "Hey, I'd like to do that in my jurisdiction." Mr. President, I really don't think that we should ever charge the victim of a theft with a fine for somebody who disposes of the stuff that they stole from them. And I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but you can spin it any way you want. If you take a shopping cart and you throw it in a creek, I think that's permanently depriving the company of that shopping cart. Because I can't see any scenario in which they're gonna go over there and try to pull it out, or that individual who threw it there is gonna pull it out and then wheel it back to the shopping center. I think that would, that's what I would refer to as petty larceny, as I understand reading the code. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose does the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the gentleman from Eastern Fairfax County yield for a question?
Will Senator Yield?
I'll yield.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I have seen pictures, I would preface my question with the following. I've seen some pictures of these golf carts piled up and...
Shopping carts.
Shopping carts. An extraordinary number of shopping carts. And I almost would think that it would have been legislation where the owner of the shopping cart would have requested legislation that they be notified so that they could go pick it up, especially since these carts range in a cost from $100 to $1,000. But here's my question, and it's similar to the one that my colleague from Virginia Beach asked. It's a fact that either somebody stole that shopping cart or otherwise misappropriated it, and it got into the creek. I have heard some questions from other people pushback that this may be the first time where the owner of property that was either stolen or misappropriated is being assessed a cost. If you could address that and not get bogged down on the, whether it's petty larceny or not. And the second thing, if you could address if there are any other options about preventing this from happening, like putting up, like we do in Richmond, these cement cylinders that prevent the people from taking the cart off the premises, or at least off the sidewalk that abuts the, the store.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I would say to the gentleman that, as I said before, that I don't think this constitutes petty larceny. I would encourage the body to look at 18.2102.1, which is on the Code of Virginia, which has to do with removal of shopping carts from store premises, which is a statute that was enacted, probably because petty larceny doesn't cover this. But I would also note that in the bill, under subsection B, the shopping cart owner is sent a notice. So that, and again, that was taken from Virginia Beach Ordinance 2348. I don't know if the gentleman from Virginia Beach was on the council at the time they passed it, but he, or even tried to take it off the books in Virginia Beach if he disagreed with it. But in any event, it came from Virginia Beach. But with regard to your other question about charging the victim, I would say that, you know, people who are injured in criminal situations bear the cost of their injuries all the time, you know, whether it's car collisions or drunk driving collisions or other things. And our system requires them to go deal with it as opposed to the perpetrator. So I would say it's not unusual in that respect, but I haven't done a search of the whole code to figure out if there's any other parallel provisions like this, other than the Virginia Beach Code of Ordinances.
Further question?
Mr. President, I thank the gentleman.
Thank the Senator.
Thank you.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 631? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 631 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 20, noes 20.
Chair votes no. Senate Bill 631 fails.
Senate Bill 746, a bill relating to comprehensive plan.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Afternoon, Senator.
I move passage to the bill, and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
First, I'm happy to say this bill has nothing to do with balloons or shopping carts. But it's a very small change to the comprehensive plan. I bring this bill at the request of Loudoun County, which has been a very high-growth area for a number of years. 33 people a day, on average, have been moving to Loudoun County, and it's made their comprehensive plan very complex. This bill simply gives them a little bit more time to do it, and it's a may, it's not a must. So it would change it to 90 days, excuse me, from 90 days to 150 if more than 25 parcels are impacted. Mr. President, move passage to the bill.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 746? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 746 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 35, noes 5.
Ayes 35, noes 5. Senate Bill 746 passes.
Senate Bill 826, a bill relating to water and sewer service charges, tenant or less see.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the bill pass, speaking to the bill.
Senator, you have the floor.
Mr. President, this bill simply puts in the cap that a landlord could be required to pay when a tenant does not pay their water or sewer bills. Right now, the statute says that the landlord can be on the hook for three months worth of those water and sewer bills, but the landlord doesn't have the ability to know what those bills would have been or to stop them. This just puts some certainty in place for the landlord, but still allows the locality to collect some of the resources back.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 826? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 826 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 38, noes 2.
Ayes 38, noes 2. Senate Bill 826 passes.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on second reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw. On page eight on the uncontested calendar, second reading.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages eight through 14, Senate Bill 101 through 849, be advanced to their engrossment in third reading in a block after the adoption of the amendments thereto. Any senator desiring to remove a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar, on pages eight through 14, Senate Bill 101 through Senate Bill 849, be engrossed and advanced to their third reading in the block after the adoption of the amendments thereto? And that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 101, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendment.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee amendment be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 164, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 165, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 230, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 235, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 268, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Mr. President, move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 293, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 296, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 350, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 394, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 548, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 549, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 611, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 685, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 725, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 727, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Senate Bill 745, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Mr. President, move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill 817, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 849, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Natural Resources, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Question is, shall the Senate bills be engrossed and advanced to their third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bills are engrossed and advanced to their third reading.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on second reading, Senate Bill 94, a bill relating to the Commonwealth Energy Policy and Virginia Energy Plan, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the substitute is agreed to.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 291, a bill relating to mortgage brokers prohibited conduct, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Senator from Bass, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to a third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 518, a bill relating to changing the Commonwealth's biennial appropriations to begin in odd-numbered years, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 582, a bill relating to conformity of the Commonwealth's taxation system with the Internal Revenue Code, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendments.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendments are agreed to. Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 604, a bill relating to land preservation tax credit verification requirements, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendment is agreed to. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be enrolled in... My, it's my seatmate, he's thrown me off track. Engrossed in advance to its third reading, please.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 610, a bill relating to pharmaceutical manufacturing grant program, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 782, a bill relating to electric utility regulation, underground electric transmission line pilot program, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that Senate Bill 782 be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 861, a bill relating to group health benefit plans sponsoring associations, the formation of benefits, of a benefits consortium, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendments.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I agree, I move we agree to the committee amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendments are agreed to. Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we engross the bill and advance it to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on first reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Yeah, Mr. President, before I make that motion, having voted on the prevailing side of 631, I would move that we reconsider the vote by which the bill was defeated, and then I'll have another motion to let it go by for the day.
Okay, the question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 631, on page six, failed, be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 40, noes, 0.
Ayes, 40, noes, 0. The motion is agreed to. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I now move that Senate Bill 631 go by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 631 will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on first reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills on first reading on the uncontested and regular calendar, pages 18 through 30, Senate Bill 52 through 979, if the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading be dispensed with.
Question is, shall the rules be suspended and the first reading of the titles of Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 18 through 30, Senate Bill 52 through Senate Bill 979, be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 39, noes, 0.
Ayes, 39, noes, 0. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that those said bills go by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bills will go by for the day.
Regular calendar, House Joint Resolution on Second Reading. House Joint Resolution 1, ratifying the Equal Rights Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. Uncontested calendar, Senate Joint Resolutions on First Reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Joint Resolutions on First Reading on the uncontested and regular calendar, pages 31 through 33, SJR 44 through SJR 46, that the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the first reading of the titles of the Senate Joint Resolutions on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 31 through 33, Senate Joint Resolution 44 through Senate Joint Resolution 46 be waived? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 39, noes, 0.
Ayes, 39, noes, 0. The reading of the titles is waived. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I now move, Mr. President, those said joint resolutions go by for the day.
Thanks, the senator. Question is, shall the Senate Joint Resolutions on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the resolutions will go by for the day.
Memorial Resolutions.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that the Memorial Resolutions on page 33, that's HJR 142 through SR 8, be considered in a block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution, remove from the block. Please do so after the clerk's read the title of the resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Memorial Resolutions on page 33, HJR 142 through SR 8, be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block? Will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the titles of the Memorial Resolutions.
House Joint Resolution 142, celebrating the life of Terry Lee Kibler. Senate Joint Resolution 69, celebrating the life of Olivia Gay Armentraut Welsh. Senate Joint Resolution 72, celebrating the life of Harry Clark Curtis. Senate Resolution 8, celebrating the life of Lorraine Brinkley Skeeter.
The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the Memorial Resolutions will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Commending Resolutions.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that the commending resolutions on pages 33 to 34, that's HJR 121 through SR 9, be considered in a block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring to remove a resolution to the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the commending resolutions on pages 33 through 34, HJR 121 through SR 9, be considered in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the numbers of the resolutions.
House Joint Resolutions 121, 135, 138, 139, 141. Senate Joint Resolutions 55...
Mr. President.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could SJR 55 come out of the block and by for the day, please?
Without objection, SJR 55 will come out of the block and go by for the day.
Mr. President.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Could SJR 135 and 141 both come out of the block and go by for... HJR 135 and 141 come out and go by for the day?
Without objection, HJR 135 and 141 will come out of the block and go by for the day.
Mr. President.
Senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Could HJR 139 on page 34 come out of the block and by for the day?
Without objection, HJR 139 will come out of the block and go by for the day.
Senate Joint Resolution 76, 82, Senate Resolution 9.
The question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? That is, all resolutions except for Senate Joint Resolution 55 and House Joint Resolutions 135, 139, and 141. All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the resolutions are agreed to. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I inquire of the clerk, does that complete the calendar for today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Do any senators wish to be recognized? Seeing none, the clerk report any announcements on the desk.
Today, Thursday, January 23rd, the Committee on Transportation will meet 15 minutes after adjournment, Senate Room 3, Capitol. The General Laws and Technology Subcommittee on Gaming will meet immediately upon adjournment of the Committee on Transportation, Senate Room 3 in the Capitol. Senators McPike, Eben, Mason, Boisco, Bell, Ruff, Dunavitt, Pillion, and Kiggins. The Education and Health Subcommittee on Public Education will meet one half hour after adjournment, Senate Subcommittee Room 2, 5th Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Hashmi, Howe, Locke, Dunavitt, and Peak. The Judiciary Subcommittee on Criminal Law will meet at 2:30 PM, Senate Subcommittee Room 3 on the 5th Floor of Pocahontas. Senators Deeds, Sasslaw, McDougal, Stewart, Stanley, Servell, and Morrissey. The Finance and Appropriations Subcommittee on K-12 Education will meet at 3:00 PM, Senate Subcommittee Room 1, 5th Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Sasslaw, Howe, Norman, Lucas, Newman, and McClellan. The Commerce and Labor Subcommittee on Health Insurance will meet at 5:00 PM, Senate Room 2 in the Capitol. Senators Barker, Edwards, and Obenchain. Tomorrow, Friday, January 24th, the Finance and Appropriations Subcommittee on Capitol Outlay will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Subcommittee Room 1, 5th Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Deeds, Norman, Howe, Sasslaw, Hanger, and Locke. The Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Room A, Pocahontas. The Education and Health Subcommittee on Health Professions will meet at 8:30 AM, Senate Subcommittee Room 2, 5th Floor, Pocahontas. Senators Barker, Sasslaw, Newman, Edwards, Dunavitt, Lewis, and Suterline. The Committee on Rules will meet at 10:00 AM, Senate Room 3 in the Capitol. The Democratic Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 1, Capitol. The Republican Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 2 in the
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Seeing none, call the senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate do now adjourn until 12 noon tomorrow.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate stand adjourned until 12 noon tomorrow? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.